Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm welcome to a regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for Monday, April 25th, 2022. Please stand and join us for a moment of silence followed by the buzzer. Thank you. Our pleasure be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. Agenda item number 1A is the approval of the work session minutes from April 4th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
And a motion by Councilmember Mer.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Oris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the work session minutes for April 4th, 2022 passed unanimously with Councilmember Pernell absent. Up next is agenda item 1B, which is the work session minutes from April 11th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by Councilmember Oris. Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the work session minutes for April 11th, 2022 passed unanimously. Up next is agenda item 1C, which is the regular session minutes for April 11th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
And I have a motion by Councilmember Oris.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the regular session minutes for April 11th, 2022 passed unanimously. Agenda item number two is an operational announcement by Mayor Zach Tyndall. I want to brief everyone that the town administrator retired on effective Friday. Our deputy town administrator, Mary Bowen, will be stepping in to fill the capacity at this time through her role as deputy town administrator. Mary joined the town of Berlin in 1991, and throughout the years she's held multiple positions such as out front customer service, a grants administrator, and then she moved -- there was a schedule or a title change from grants administrator to special projects administrator, and then into the deputy town administrator role where she's also served as acting town administrator more than three times. Just a little bit about Mary additionally, her husband John was the first K-9 officer here in Berlin from 1988 to 1999. He was injured in the line of duty, retiring in 1999. John passed 2018, so he is in our thoughts as well as Mary. So that is the operational announcement. Up next is agenda item number three, which is the Board of Supervisors of Elections. I have a nomination for Ms. Gina Malone. The letter is in the packet. You should have also received a copy of her application materials. I am requesting that the council approve Ms. Malone for a four-year term on the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Make a motion to approve Gina Malone for a four-year term on the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris and a second by Councilmember Burrell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Malone's nomination passed unanimously. Up next is the swearing in. Do we have Mr. Whaley, Ms. Bowen, and Mr. Bowen? I don't believe so.
No.
Okay, so we can move that swearing in to a later date. Up next is Ms. Samantha Steltzer. All right, so we'll come back and revisit that in just a moment as well. Samantha is a communications intern from Salisbury University. She'll be giving us a presentation in a couple minutes. We'll move on to a special one-day permit application for the Taylor House Museum, and we do have board president, Ms. Melissa Reed, here with us as well. Come on up. Just introduce yourself. We know who you are.
Hello, everybody. My name is Melissa Reed. I'm the president at the Taylor House Museum in Berlin, and we have put in application for a one-day permit to sell beer and wine at our Sunday evenings on the lawn, just one in June. The time is from 6:00 to 7:30. Do I ask people questions? Do I just?
So it's a pretty straightforward request. Thank you for joining us this evening. We would be looking for a motion to approve this one-day permit, and if you have any questions for Ms. Reed, she's here with us this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day permit.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Mer.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And let the record reflect that the special one-day permit for the Taylor House passed unanimously. Thank you.
I didn't have any idea. Ask you, so where do we know what the beer, I mean drinking beer and dot, dot, dot?
So the exciting thing is, it is part of our, the Konstall Salon that takes place the second Sunday every month in the summer. And this one we're really excited about is a Grammy-winning jazz guitarist, a guy named Ronnie Smith. So we were grant-funded from the Maryland State Parks Council to pay the fee for this musician. So we thought, because he's really a high-level, sort of high-caliber musician, we would try and do beer and wine on the lawn. We have done it when we've had fundraisers before for afternoon on the lawn, but this time this will be the first one that we try for our Sunday evenings. What's nice is it's a short period of time, so it'll get, you know, the music only goes from 6:00 to 7:00, so we've asked until 7:30 just to kind of, you know, wind it down. And we have done in the past, we know, you know, what we need to do as part of the requirements to grow off the lawn and have someone who is checking IDs and things like that. So we've done this before for a fundraiser, but we thought we would see if people would like to come out on a Sunday evening, hopefully, and sort of sit on the lawn and enjoy a drink and listen to some excellent music.
Sounds like a fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. I wanted to sign. I will contact you. We can take it in customer service.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Samantha, I saw you came in. We didn't have our folks here for the swearing in, so we were a little ahead of schedule, so we'll circle back to agenda item number four. Yep.
No, did I have a parallel parking? You went well. That's a very good shot.
So Samantha, as you can, as you remember, Samantha came before us to be introduced. When she started her internship, she's done some work locally with also the Taylor House Museum, but she's worked on a couple of projects throughout her time with her internship, and I'll let her take it away from here.
Awesome. Hello, councilmembers. Hello, everyone in the audience. My name is Samantha Steltzer. I'll be giving a brief overview of the past 13 weeks of my internship, mainly focused on the past mayors of Berlin. So just as reference, I'm a communication intern for the mayor's office for Berlin. I am a senior at Salisbury University with the Clark Honors College, and I'm a double major of communication and history. So it was wonderful to have this internship because it sort of balanced my two majors in a sense that we will see. So the big part of my project was the past mayor project. As most of us know, we have our entire sort of hallway of past mayors, but that's it. That's all we really have on them. We have our memories of certain mayors, but for mayors, you know, 10, 20, 60 years ago, not so much. So my goal was to bring to light information and their history to share with the rest of the citizens of Berlin. So this is what the website looked like before we began our research, as you can tell. No pictures at all whatsoever other than Mr. Tyndall, and no information about any of the mayors. There were even a few mayors missing that I found. So bulk of my research took place with various online resources. As you can see in the top-left corner, we have a newspaper I found of the Berlin advance from 1911 that I referenced. I referenced various news articles and books, as you can see in the bottom two pictures. And essentially, on a Word document, I just jotted down every single mayor that there's been, all 24 of them, and went from there, went mayor by mayor, lots of research, lots of digging in obituaries and whatnot. I was able to use our lovely Welcome Center. Ivy Wells and Allison were very generously shared books and information, learned a lot about Berlin houses in one binder. Cannot do anything without acknowledging the Calvin B. Taylor House Museum. They were an invaluable resource about the past mayors of Berlin. And I believe, as most of us know, the wonderful Ms. Carol Rose, she was absolutely incredible on it. Yes, thank you, thank you. I sat down with her. The image in the top-right corner is just some of the notes I jotted down with her. We went mayor by mayor and got to hear her recollections of each mayor, neighbors, family members, how they related. It was truly an honor to sit down and hear her stories. And to the left is a lovely ledger from town meeting minutes. So now, yay, it's wonderful, we have our past mayor section completed website. We have pictures for the mayors, and if you click on each of them, you will see a brief biography for each of the mayors with the resources I showed. Here's just a closer look at two of the past mayors of Berlin. As you can tell, with Mr. Burridge, some of our information for our earlier mayors, or slightly less than, say, Mr. Willie and Whaley, because of the lack of information just on them, but I tried my best to make sure that each mayor was properly represented and had at least one interesting tidbit. So also in conjunction with the past mayor project, I was also asked to do a social media push for this. This meant creating Facebook posts, which I hope some of you have viewed on the town's Facebook and Instagram. I simply created them in Canva, and the goal was to create a brief post that highlighted certain facts from the mayors, got you interested, represented each of them, so each of the mayors will be shown on the Facebook throughout May. As you can see, the one on the right was our lovely Dr. John William Pitts, who was the first mayor of Berlin. And then one of our more recent ones, Mr. J. Richard Phillips. And at the bottom, you can see there is a brief link to the section itself. Along with past mayor project, I also did work with the Veterans Memorial downtown and the Stephen Decatur Memorial as well. Both heavily used resources at the wonderful Taylor House Museum. I learned a lot about the famous 1995 Memorial Day Veterans Ceremony Parade. I got the chance to speak to Mr. Vance Holloway and Elroy Brittingham and learn more about the ceremony themselves. And then along with the Stephen Decatur Memorial, we have about three. The anchor in the car, as you can see there in the middle, was a picture I found when they first placed it. Salisbury Times article that talked about the Decatur birthplace memorial, and then our brief sign on the highway right outside of Berlin. Just some extra projects I was able to work on. I was able to create a few posts advertising the mayor and town council meetings, and I helped with the World Down Syndrome Day press release and some examples of the Facebook posts as well. So a big part of this, of being in Berlin for the past few weeks, has been recognizing and sharing history of Berlin. You have over 150 years of it, and so it's been an honor to learn it and share it with the residents, gain a deeper understanding of it, and hopefully find some more incredible things in the future, and we're able to share that as well. So thank you very much, and I'm open to any questions as well.
Thank you. So any questions from the council regarding the projects that Samantha's worked on throughout this semester?
I just have one question. You mentioned you discovered a couple of mayors that weren't previously known?
Yes, they weren't previously listed on the website, the past mayor's website, mainly just because of the dates. They had very brief service records, so they weren't included. So it was just bringing to light that, yes, they did serve. It was for, you know, one year or two years, but they were, they were serving.
I think it's, I think it was great to see the Monday, the Mayor Mondays. That was, that was really cool and clever.
Thank you.
I guess the, did you enjoy your time with that?
Yes, I did. I enjoyed meeting everyone. I enjoyed researching. I love it. I love learning about the history of these kinds of things. It's almost like a treasure hunt for me because, you know, you have a goal. Okay, the goal is to find about, find out research about the past mayors. Well, there's no one single line of action to find this kind of information. It's a treasure hunt of picking from this news article, which then leads me to an obituary, which then references text that I had read in a book. And so it's combining all of these resources into one single project.
And did I, did I understand correctly that we used to hold a Veterans Day Parade?
Yes. It was a big one in 1995, put on by the Calvin B. Taylor House Museum and our two American Legions, American Legion 123 and American Legion 231. They created a combined Veterans Day Parade in conjunction with the end of World War II, the 50th anniversary of it. And they had brought in the veterans who were listed on the Veterans Memorial. A big celebration happened.
Thank you.
Splendid project. Thank you for your work.
So what's one thing of everything you've learned that really led out to you?
Each of the small little projects the mayor's implemented, I learned that a lot of these two, that these mayors were obviously very connected with the town. I liked learning about, Calvin B. Pruitt owned a candy shop with a friend downtown. I learned the origin of the old Mack fire truck, how one of the mayors built sort of like a house, a little fire engine room for it, just to show that each mayor left their mark on Berlin in one small but very significant way.
Well, thank you. I mean, you brought what has been something that many people just walk by to life, and people can access that from anywhere. It gives a little glimpse into Berlin's history and kind of the context of each particular mayor, so I appreciate everything you did. We can't thank you enough for your work. I mean, Samantha has been a go-getter. I'm sure Melissa can attest to this as well from the Taylor House, but you give her a direction, and within, I don't know, a couple weeks, and she's here with a mountain of research to work through, so you're really destined for some awesome things.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, up next on our agenda is agenda item number experience, which is the approval of the town flag, seal, and anchor. You've got myself and Mr. Brian Robertson. Brian, you want to come on up? So this project started, I'll let Brian kind of say when this whole process began.
Okay, I can't even say when it began. Probably months ago.
Yeah, I think it was sometime around October of last year or so.
Yeah, well, it was just a, you know, idea of wanting to have a town flag, and to do that, we had to make the logo consistent. I think if you look behind you, you're going to see two different logos behind you, right? So to put that logo on the flag, we had to make sure everything else was consistent, so we just built some brand standards, standardized the color and the typography. And, you know, the only two town flags are this one currently and the one at the visitor center, and I think they were just, they do lack inconsistency, and we wanted something that was more symbolic that the town can rally around, so we just simplified it, cleaned up all the lines, because, you know, after a certain amount of time, the logo got, you know, distorted because it was copied so many times. And I think if you look at some of the, you know, forms and papers that you guys handle, you know, they're a little different on each one. The typography's a little distorted, crest is a little bit cockeyed, so we just kind of cleaned it up and, you know, made it so that you can build up to whatever size you need, just build it up to. We created one-colored version so that you can use it on multiple items, dark and light backgrounds, whether you're doing signage or shirts or whatever promotional items. It's probably also going to save you a little bit on money if you're just printing one color as opposed to two. It can be printed in foil. It can be cut out of vinyl for door lettering, but the main purpose was just to create a flag, but we had to go backwards and clean all this other stuff up before we did that.
Well, thank you. And this is a culmination of, what, nine different flag designs that you proposed as options?
Yep.
Four different seals, of which two were chosen, one for a more formal setting, which is the one where you see the official logo, and then one that's a little more unofficial that they've used for like a website, or you'll also see that similar design on like the police department, the electric utility.
Oh, yeah.
It does exist in some form or fashion.
Well, the main purpose is so that you can use it in smaller spaces, so like if you shrink down the seal into a small space, whether it's a social media icon, the typography kind of disappears. So you want to be able to pull those pieces apart and use them separately in spaces that they fit.
And Brian has, when you, when I say the words that you've really given us the hometown discount on this, I would say that's not speaking out of turn. Is that correct?
It is that.
So.
And it's much clearer than this is portraying, this is a PDF version, so it's just not, don't judge this one clarity.
And the other thing is, is that of those nine flag designs and the four seals, it was sent to the council. Everybody kind of provided their insight as to what they felt the higher, like, the vote count was as far as what they liked the best, and then that's what's here before us for official approval this evening.
Yep.
So with that being said, if there aren't any questions for Brian, we would like a motion to approve.
I have, I have a question, and I'll ask Brian, and may I ask the question?
Yes, ma'am. Just name and street, street name.
Carol Rose, 37th and Drive. I love Brian's work. It's very special to me. I'd like, I'd just like to know why the council wasn't answered to begin with about, about changing everything and just.
I don't know if I fully understand your question.
My question is that evidently the council was not aware that any of this work was being done until it was done.
I don't think that's accurate.
I have emails and said what to say it is, and so my understanding is that if the work was done, council and people got an email that said, "Which do you like?"
There was an email that said, "Which do you like?", which is what we asked as far as the voting, as far as the nine flag designs, but the idea that we were working through this was not a secret.
Well, how everybody says they know you have, but so why is not somebody?
I can't speak to that, but I can also say that the expenditure was in the public record, so in the end of each council meeting packet, there's also the expenditures there for Brian's services. It's not been a secret.
Well, what, what's the necessity to do this? When we have no money in the budget coming out of, I mean, it's budget time. The department has, they're told, give us a budget, just what you need, just that. I'm mad that this is not costing very much, but it's the principle of the thing. And, and, and how this type of thing is perceived by, by our employees. This is great. It's beautiful. Berlin does wonderful work. Maybe we do need it, but it's a slap in the face in my estimation to be spending money when we're trying to do a budget. Nobody, nobody could have anything in the budget cost absolutely necessary and then get out, up for, and then we're spending money for what we do not need right this minute. But where, but where's the money coming from? Which area of our budget is there money to pay for this?
The expenditure has already been paid in FY '22.
From what?
And it did come out of administration, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a public record, so I think it was $110.
Yeah, it was, it was around $100.
Yeah, so, I mean, and to your point of the necessity, right, so I think when we look at this, right, we all display our pride in different ways.
Oh, I'm sad to hear pride, threat. This is not necessary right now, and it's a slap in the face to every employee in this town, that y'all are spending money, either it's $100 or something we don't need right this minute. So I'm saying it's just.
So with that being said, I am asking the council to approve. This is paid expenditure already. It's more or less the ability to use these as official logos and flags. That is the request this evening. So it does take a motion, and it does take a second, if not the middle, fly on the floor.
Are you asking us to appropriate money for this?
No, it's already been spent.
The money, this money came from 2022.
I understand that.
Yeah, the funds were already.
Just being clear on this, the council did not approve any kind of funding. We did, we did look at the designs, but we never approved any funding.
The approval of funding, since it falls within the threshold of the town administrator at the time was a $10,000 spending limit, this was a $100 expenditure, so.
He signed off.
Correct, at my request, so in full disclosure.
I make a motion to approve the drawings, the renderings.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Councilmember Mer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm going to need the roll call, not because I heard an aye, an aye, I did not hear.
What are you doing here?
An abstention?
No.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I voted for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I couldn't hear. So in favor, and then Councilmember Oris?
Aye.
In favor. So the approval of the town flag, seal, and anchor as displayed this evening passes unanimously. Thank you, Brian.
So this is something, just for clarity, simple to what you just said a minute ago, this $110 expenditure was signed off on before today by, within the 2022 budget, for those of you in the audience and those listening, even when our previous town administrator was here, he's the person who did the signing.
Correct, and in full disclosure, at my request. And the other side of that is that it's within, just so that everybody's aware, within the $10,000 spending limit, and it did come out of administration, and I believe it was $100. Either way, it was in the public record, and we can get that exact figure to everybody. All right. Thank you, Brian. Up next is agenda item number seven, which is contract award, contract award recommendation for the smart meter procurement and our water resources director, as well as Mr. Josh.
Josh didn't want to tip on himself.
Okay, all right. Well, then come on up and tell us about smart.
Couple months ago, we, when Jean Holloway did a report, we noticed how much water revenue we're losing with the inaccurate meters, so you'll give us the green light to proceed with a RFP and go out and bid for receiving new meters. They were all sent to Josh at Davis-Bodden-Birdell, and he's done his due diligence of going through and making sure all the stuff made as, made the specs and what we were asking for, and you had his recommendation letter in front of you.
Thank you. And do you want to give us a little bit of an overview as to what led to your recommendation as far as the party?
Certainly. We had worked with the town over the past several months, figuring out which, you know, what kind of system the town wanted. We wanted a system that was going to last for a long time, not just in regards to the meters and their quality, but also with regards to the software, programming, usability, expandability. So we were looking at some of the more popular meters and automated meter reading systems out there. I'm a municipal engineer. I only deal with towns and counties, so I have experience with smart meters, and I have a lot of clients. I can call them for their information. One of, some of the things that were very important to the town were that it be free. Right now, the EPA is cracking down on lead and copper with the new Better Copper rule guidelines.
And not to cut Josh off, one of the main things we really were after is because we're using ARPA money, it had to be American-made. Oh, sorry. I had to see your glory.
It's okay.
But I mean, I just, you know, I wanted that to be, you know, since we're using ARPA money, we wanted to make sure it was American-made. And when we did the American Road Recovery Act, when we did the treatment plan, you had to have meet a certain criteria, and that we withdrew a lot of that to be American-made.
Yeah, that was, that was very important. You guys didn't know Jeff was in the army, so that was very important. We spend that money on American-made products. We wanted a good warranty. The systems need to be compatible, the town's meter reading systems and billing systems, so I was talking with Melissa and the girls in billing. Everything has to be able to go into a GIS system, so I spoke with, who is with?
Megan.
Megan, because she's kind of the town's GIS person. So we really did a lot of digging, but one of the things I put most of my faith in was contacting users, municipal users who are currently using the systems, getting their input, not only on, on whether or not it met their expectations with regards to the accuracy of the meter and the efficiency of. of the meter, and the efficiency of the, uh, billings and saving money for the town, but also the service that they were receiving, uh, not only with the coming out and fixing a meter or fixing a meter reader, but also, uh, the service with regards to the tech, uh, 'cause that's one thing that really none of us understand, Jamie can go out there and change out a meter, but when your, your technology's not working, you need an expert. Uh, so, I contacted, uh, various towns, and, um, again, leading to our recommendation, which was to go with Core and Main and the Neptune brand meters, one of the big things, uh, was it was lead-free, it was made in America, had a lifetime warranty, it was compatible with all the town's, uh, meter reading, billing systems, but I continuously heard positive things about their service, uh, how they were, um, they would call right back, they'd come out, they would provide equipment, uh, they would fix problems immediately, and it really made the towns, even though my clients are all small towns, uh, in rural counties, made them feel very important, uh, so the service, the service provided by Neptune and by Core and Main was also a, a big factor in, in our recommendation, and, and we took it very seriously, um, you know, the, it was pretty easy, L V Water Uresensas meters in the mix, uh, they are currently here at the town's meter, and they were extremely hot, uh, Zin, Dover Plumbing supplied a Zener, um, I had never heard of Zener in, until this, um, so I was, I was, I really did some digging there, uh, but with Core and Main, we gave a very fair price at seven hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, um, but it was hot, it was the middle, uh, it was the middle bid, so I, I wanted to make sure we were, did our, their homework, and that I was comfortable in making the recommendation, and I, you guys have any questions about the...
Do you have a question, Josh? Dover Supply proposed an alternative, uh, ultrasonic meter, what is, what is the difference?
So, yeah, that was kind of strange, especially when someone supplies an alternative, it's a save money, uh, they supplied alternative, that was a little hot.
Higher up the charge, yeah.
Yeah, um, and they basically, instead of the, um, smaller meters being mechanically based, they're ultrasonic also, the large meters are all ultrasonics, so they were offered a different, uh, technology of the meter across the board for slightly more money, which kind of defeats the purpose of an alternative in my, in my view of that.
Tell us about new tricks of measurement.
So these, uh, meters can, can measure to, you guys built two thousand gallons, but these, uh, can measure down to the gallon, uh, so the twenty, twenty-five percent of, of water has been basically not being built for by the town in the past, it's gonna go away, you know, have very accurate, uh, meter readings for years to come, um, and, I don't know what your...
Well, and then I'm gonna throw in something else in here, yes, this is, does the, the water side, but this does affect the waste water side, and not, the waste water needs the revenue also, so it, it, it's double-fold here, 'cause all your sewer is billed off of your water, so now we're recuperating twenty-five percent also on the water side, or the waste water side, so, I mean, that's...
Of course, waste water's two, three times the cost of water.
Ours is three times higher than the cost of water.
But...
Gallons would be the...
But the public will be billed according to their actual use per gallon, and it won't have a thousand gallon.
Right now, we build, sorry, but right now, we, we build per a thousand gallons, 'cause that's what our meters read to, um, when we get the new meter system in, we will be back to approach you all to read by, charged by the gallon, we'll come up with a new rate schedule.
The way the rate schedule is set right now has to be done by resolution, so when the new meter system goes in, and they're prepared to adjust what those minimum bills might be, at that time, we'll have to reintroduce that resolution and adjust those, those rates.
And I think to that point, uh, Jean Holloway, her CAPS report recommended, I think, a period of six months with having these in place, so we have an idea of what our usage looks like, uh, whether we were capturing that twenty-five percent or not, before we go through and adjust rates, so we'll be doing this in conjunction with CIRCAP as well.
And I will tell you, this, this is gonna be about, by the time we approach you back for the resolution, we'll probably be about this time next year.
But bottom line, the Berlin customer will be receiving a more accurate bill.
Yes, sir. They will be getting billed for what they technically...
Based on their actual use.
Yes, yes, sir. And, and the nice thing is, I, I know there's a couple residents in the room that really watch our water usage, and, um, hopefully in due time, I don't want everybody to be calling tomorrow and saying, "Well, why is it not online now?", 'cause our meters aren't capable, but hopefully in due time, once with cards and Ma, and Mary get everything set up, and we get everything set up, you will be able to see your actual usage day by day, um, there's...
You as the customer, can you just get online and check it out yourself?
The only thing that you could turn off all of the water in your house, and go online and see if your meter is moving, and that lets you know that you have a leak.
And I'm, I'm playing the other side here, too, just right, like, right now, we don't, so, I, I had a guy called Friday, Thursday, had a water leak inside of a building right here on Main Street, it ran for thirty days before he realized it, with these new meters, I mean, he used thirty-six thousand gallons in thirty days, so with these new meters, we'll be able to tell, we'll have it set up in our computer system, like, the hospital has constant use twenty-four hours a day, so it will come up, but we will set it up so that we can see it, if there's a place using water twenty-four hours con, constant, we'll, we'll go knock on the door, or leave a flyer, or send them an email or something, but we, that's, that is a goal of saving water and, and saving the customer, too.
So we'll learn into that over usage much, much more quickly...
Yeah, I mean, I...
Than waiting for the next meter read.
Now, the gentleman has to pay for thirty-six thousand gallons of water, because it was a toilet, so, I mean, it, it went in, and so he, so he has to pay for both water and sewer, so, I mean, would you like us to notify you in twelve hours if there was something going on, or, or not thirty days?
And the other, the other point is, is that I think what was allocated was up to a million dollars, so this does come in under that, uh, amount, do you still, is the recommendation to still keep that million dollars there in case you encounter some lead plate?
We, we have to, we have to pay for installation yet, we have to go out to bid for installation and all that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is equipment procurement only, and those funds were allocated from ARPA.
And there was a million, correct?
I will, I would say it was one point three.
Yeah, I was thinking about one.
I'm not for sure.
I may be mistaken about that, I would have to go back and...
But we were under what, I didn't know we were under what you allocated to us for the equipment.
Thank you, so we are seeking approval of the, uh, recommendation to go with Core and Main, uh, for seven hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll make a motion to reapprove Core and Main as the water meter bill.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nurr, and the second by Councilmember Burrell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the motion passed.
And just seeing that this would be, and there's a roughly two thousand meters that we're doing, proceed, so, there's six inches, six inch meters, uh, three tins, all the way up to, there's nineteen hundred five inch meters, so...
So, Jay, I mean, just before you all head out, just let's say, let's kind of explain this, so this is for the, uh, this is for the, the, uh, the actual meters, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then we're gonna do another one for the installation?
Yes.
Do you have a guess at what that might be?
I don't wanna tell you anything right now, what prices are coming in, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I think we would be under it.
Under, under the million?
We'll be close to that, if not, just a tad bit more, I think, Mary, I'm more off what Mary said, to one point three, um, you know, we still have to install antennas on the water towers.
Well, I think the one point, if I remember correctly, it's, it's actually a million, 'cause three hundred is for power.
Okay.
So, it's only a million, so you only have a little less than three hundred thousand.
We'll have to figure that out.
Ron Dell has confirmed that it is a million.
It's a million.
Okay, and, so we, we will, we will, you know, we'll have to go out to bid, and if, you know, it comes in more, then we'll have to come back and...
And how would you, assuming this all goes through, uh, how, how would you do the actual notification to the customers, to the residents?
Um, well, we have code red, and we have the website, and we would probably go out, try to knock on, make up of some door hangers and hang the day before, or, you know, but I, I'm sure, assuming the customers will note, be notified in their bills also.
I mean, we can, I, I just, for everyone listening and watching...
Yes, I mean, I, I have their problem going around and hanging, um, I would venture to say, some of the, some of the meter pits have copper shutters in them, so they will go very fast, so you'd probably change out quite a few in a day, so the water could be interrupted in ten to fifteen minutes, um, some of them are hard piped, so you could be interrupted an hour to an hour and a half, I mean, but, you know, like, the hospital and them, they have a bypass that we won't, they will never be interrupted, um, and we will make sure that, and we do usually do them at...
Is that the same for the rest?
Uh, no, Gold Creek, and speaking of that, Gold Creek will be out of water Wednesday night, so we can change out the meter in there due to its growth, um, but we have called them, the fire, they're gonna notify the fire department, alarm system, alarm company, all them, um, but it should only be off for about an hour at max, 'cause all we have to do is take four bolts out and put a new meter in it.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add one thing, um, as part of the meter installation, uh, process, which I think you guys, uh, understand, that we, we broke out the procurement and the installation, so that we're not paying a contractor overhead on the material costs, so that's a money, uh, right there, but as part of the process of installing these meters, we are going to meet a lot of the requirements for the new EPA lead and copper guidelines, so something that's costing most towns fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to, to do your water service inventory, uh, you guys are gonna do as part of this, this project, uh, so really, it's kind of two birds with one stone.
To Josh's point, I am certainly no expert on the, the lead and copper stuff, but that's something we would have had to address regardless of anything else, so being able to do it in combination with this is definitely, in the long run, a significant cost savings.
Thank you, Bill. And up next is agenda item number eight, A, which is a discussion about a stadium cater park walking path resurfacing, and our W town administrator, Mary Boland, will...
Um, prior to his leaving, I believe that the, uh, Jeff had informed you all that, or, I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up a little bit more, he had been asked to look into the possibility of not doing the asphalt replacement of the walking path, and instead doing that with a crush and run, so he did explore it with the contractor, who indicated it would be a thousand twenty thousand dollar savings, that's from the monetary side alone, some of the concerns that have been raised is ongoing maintenance, because the crush and run, and Jimmy can speak better to this, but the crush and run would require more maintenance than, than asphalt, just in the long run, would need to be refreshed, carried out, and that sort of thing, um, there can be some migration of material outside of the path, where would that get picked up by homeowners, that sort of thing, so the cost savings in the long run may not outweigh the, the benefit of, of doing the asphalt, but I think that Jimmy can probably speak, he has a lot more expertise to that than I can.
Yes, we're, the concern is that, uh, if we do put asphalt, we can possibly get twenty, twenty-five years out of asphalt, majority of the park is in the shade, so it's not something that, what we heard was, uh, and I'm not saying that dogs couldn't burn their feet, but majority of the park is in shade, so the majority of the path would be in shade, that throughout the whole day, um, but when you get into the, the stone dust, that would be something we would actually have to do more, uh, maintenance yearly, and it will not last twenty years, or twenty-five years, so we'd actually have to look at, in ten years, maybe replenishing the whole path, uh, it's just a consideration to be made at, throughout that project.
The other side, I think, is that mobility-wise, a smooth surface versus even a, a very fine gravel surface has, uh, an impact on those that are either looking to try and learn how to operate bicycles and scooters and things of that nature, or those that may be, uh, using some assist device, uh, or a stroller or something of that nature, so, uh, it is a discussion item, I had received a request from the council about whether we could adjust course, uh, I reached out to the town administrator at the time, and he touched base with the contractor, and the contractor said, "Actually, you caught us right at the point where we could have that discussion", so we asked them to hold off until we could discuss it as a MBI, the RFP, uh, had gone out and been approved for asphalt, um, unless there's a strong direction to change course, uh, the recommendation would be to continue to move forward.
Well, I, I think I'd like to hear from the Parks Commission.
Okay. We can go forward, yep. Just, uh, name and position.
Oh, no, no, you guys can... They give you more support.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just name and your, your committee that you said on, you know, the time.
I'm Laura Stern's one oh two South Main, and I'm a member of the Parks Commission.
Mike Wiley, three seventeen Buttercup Court, Chairman, Berlin Parks Commission.
Thank you.
Um, over the weekend, I guess, all of the park commissioners received phone calls and stuff, I was luckily out of town for a day and a half, I missed some of them, but, uh, we've had all kinds of opinions, uh, for every material possible, um, I, I had contacted some of the seniors, the senior ladies at work walked very early in the morning, they were very concerned on the gravel, first they, the wrong information came out, they had wrong information come, their fears on, there wasn't loose gravel, but explained about the CR six pipe gravel, uh, but they were very concerned about that, naturally so, and, uh, I've had some, I even had someone suggest to go back to what we had, well, we, we all know the issues with that, go way back, and that was out, um, I think Laura's heard from people, she personally also, as a power walker, can add something to that as far as the laptop, the advantages of that, so...
Well, first of all, I'd just say that I would first choose something that would be a rubberized trail, um, and I know you all know the history of this trail, um, but for the people that might be watching on Facebook, um, what's happened is, that was an experiment years ago, over ten years ago, I think, and what happened was, they, they tried it, and it was so cool at first, um, but then it didn't hold up to our cold winters, and what's happened is, it's, you know, bugged, and I've walked on it for years like that, I, I loved it, you know, for what it was, but as it's gotten more and more damaged over time, I've slipped and fallen, it grow, it grows a fungus at, um, when it gets wet, it's slick, um, and I was always concerned, you know, is this a lawsuit, because it's so badly damaged, and honestly, that park is my happy place, I go there all the time, it's beautiful, and I was so bothered by that trail that I decided to see if I could be a part of the Parks Commission. When I first brought it up, I was told, and this is the truth, um, the town doesn't have the money to replace it, it would be ridiculously expensive, the rubberized trail is, if, I'm sure it would be hundreds of thousands, everybody knows the situation that the town is in, so I thought, we'd never get this, so, you know, I went on being bothered by the trail, but I still went there, um, and then I heard that it would be replaced with asphalt, I was so excited, just because it's a clean surface, um, it, and it, you know, it's not ideal for a long one, but it's a heck of a lot better than stone dust, stone dust kicks up, you wind up with it in your shoes, um, the park path was built for runners and walkers, it's evident by the, um, by the signs, there's, um, signage around the park that tells how far you're going, that's for runners and walkers, there were fitness, um, stations around it, it was meant as a community fitness area, and if we take that away, um, by putting the stone dust, um, I feel like we'd be taking something from the community, um, as it is, I've seen, there's one woman in particular, I've seen her over the years, she walks with a walker, and she walks lap after lap after lap, um, I just think stone dust, it's, it's not good for people with strollers, moms that are, you know, using jogging strollers, um, one of the Parks Commission members heard from three different women that said that they would not continue to use the trail if it was stone dust, because of the difficulty, you know, maneuvering a stroller across stone, um, also, I'd like to say that the, um, the pond loop was already stone dust, and it was not well-maintained by this town, through no one's fault, it probably wasn't in the budget, there were huge bear spots where it had worn away, and it was just fuzz showing that was from the underlayment, and, um, fortunately, we had a, a citizen stepped up and replaced it with his own money, but in my mind, this is what I'm picturing, when I'm picturing stone dust, um, I think I've said everything I could possibly say about stone dust. I think I've said everything I could possibly say about stone dust.
You're right, I mean, that pathway currently does get very slick. Like if you go around one of those turns and you're even going at a slow pace.
I know, I thought that far.
When the pathway was put in, we received a lot of compliments on it. We had a gentleman came to one of our meetings when we met over across the hall. He sat there all night and was very quiet. And when it was time for public input, he got up and gave us almost everything but his blood work for medical. He told us how he had been overweight, high cholesterol, and I think blood pressure. He's on his own, he started walking, started out very short walks. And through time, his health improved and his walks got longer. And he sat there all night waiting to just thank us, the town for putting that in. So it definitely attracts a variety of people.
It was awesome, but I just feel like this is our chance to have that taken away.
So just so we're clear, the Parks Commission feels that a solid surface path is the recommendation?
Yeah, I'd say we didn't have an official vote, I guess, at the last meeting, but the general discussion was kind of going towards it just us talking, you know, unofficially and everything. It's no right answer. I realize that even the blacktop could have an issue with roots or something through, but I imagine that could be taken, section cut out and taken care of. So there's no one that's a hundred percent perfect or anything, I'm sure.
So this is a discussion item. If there's a passion by the mayor and council to change course, we could take that in the form of a recommendation or a motion. If not, it can continue as is and we'll get the deputy town administrator to move forward with the vendor to let them know that we'll go with the solid surface path as previously approved.
I just want to real quick, as part of the discussion, thank the Parks Commission for their input. And also just a personal apology to you folks because we kind of had a misstep, I think, in not notifying you. So I, I mean, I, I'm personally saying, I'm sorry for that. But, um, so thank you for coming tonight and emailing us and letting us know your thoughts.
You're most welcome.
Is there any recommendations to change course? So then, all right, let's move on to agenda item D. Yes, we'll move forward with that. The American Rescue Plan Act funding. I have asked our senior accountant, Rondell Wise, to give us just an overview of the four different kind of umbrellas that could be fallen underneath our pumps. It's, yeah, there's nothing in the back, it's a, it's a discussion item. So, Rondell, just give us an overview of what those four classifications are and then we'll begin with the discussion.
Good evening, the mayor and council, everyone in attendance. The four categories for the ARPA funds is, the first one is replace a lost revenue, which you can perform a calculation to determine the revenue loss in reference to the pandemic based off of your previous years and use some of that money towards supplementing that revenue that you lost during that period. That's the first one. Second one would be support the COVID-19 public health and economic response, which is a way of doing programs that affect people who were affected by the pandemic, housing, hospitals, different aspects of the community, households, and just trying to alleviate the hardship provided by the pandemic. That's the second one. The third one is actually provide premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work, which comes down to allowing for an increase for workers that were working during the pandemic and did essential job during the pandemic, essential work. And it does have restrictions as far as, it's also geared toward not just giving them more money, but also alleviating the stress of the COVID-19 on those households and workers. And the fourth one is investing in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, such as water and sewer projects, stormwater projects, as well as extensive broadband projects in towns and local neighborhoods.
Thank you. So as of current, we've received half of the ARPA allotment. So that's $2,397,136.35. We're scheduled to receive that same amount, but as Rondell said, a penny shy of that. So that's going to be $2,397,136.34. For a total of $4,794,272.69. With that being said, the phase two of the funding is probably going to arrive toward the end of the calendar year, calendar year 2022. So with that being said, the available funds that could be allocated up to this point are the $2.3 million. With that being said, this body has heard from the public regarding ways to allocate some of that funding. We've also had some internal discussions and I've received some emails from the group, which is why it's set up as a discussion item for this evening. I do want to run down a couple of things that are on the list. I've tried to hit within these different four categories and then I'd like us to discuss anything that we want to add to the list and then prioritize that. With that being said, the one difference with the revenue loss, there is a new final ruling that says that you can either do a calculation on that value or you can do a straight value amount of up to $10 million, which can be, cannot exceed the amount that you received, which for us is a little more than 4.7 million. With that being said, one of the requests that we have for the FY23 budget in the police department was for radios. Our, our group used to operate with radios and for the handheld radios that operate on the 800 megahertz system with the county, with the ability to hear from the police department. And we have a dedicated town of Berlin channel. The use of radios has gone by the wayside several years ago, but we've noticed that with storm operations, snowstorms and things of that nature, we are borrowing radios from the county to be able to have enough to be able to sustain operations. So with that being said, I requested, there was a, I believe somebody down south either Snow Hill or Pocimoke that recently received or purchased with ARPA funds, fifteen radios. And that number came to $92,949.90. And that's about $6,196.66 per radio, just to give you an idea of what that looks like. We've also had AV system that's continued to pop up for here in the council chamber so everybody can be able to watch. Nothing against Facebook, but there is a little bit of a better system out there. Mary's quoted that before for us in the past, but it's always been removed because we didn't have the available funding. And this AV system would meet some of the ARPA designations because it's improving access to public meetings. We've discussed the idea of digitizing some of our documents. Here at Town Hall, we have a lot of paper, how much, two sheds?
No, that's just what's in storage.
Two sheds just in storage of documents. There's really no other way that we're going to really be able to cover the cost of digitizing those documents outside of maybe using the ARPA funds. So that is something I'd like for everybody to have on their list. The smart meters, we had a billion dollars. I think a good rule of thumb rate at this moment is to put it at a billion and three. Stormwater project was approved at up to $110,000 for Washington Street. We have received some requests from the Brown Fire Company, fire and EMS sides for assistance with SCBA and cardiac monitors. So that is on my list to discuss a possible way to fund that together. We also shelved a strategic plan last fiscal year in FY22, or this current fiscal year, with the idea that we would try to fund that in FY23. It's not in the budget currently, but I would like to see a strategic plan added to that under the umbrella of positioning the town of Berlin post-pandemic recovery. Additionally, there was a request by the planning department to add a growth discussion. And I believe that could fall under the same umbrella as far as allowing us to have a conversation about what it looks like to live in Berlin and maybe telework. Or you have people that may live here part-time. How does that look and what do we see as the town for a growth plan? That's something that hopefully could be added to the comprehensive plan. I think we can't forget our, our businesses that have weathered the pandemic. So I did ask Rondell to pull some numbers about FY21 and to current, the amount that we've received in business license fees as a possible metric for returning that back to our business community in a proportionate amount. That's roughly $27,000 for FY21 and it would be about the same for FY22. And then we have the revenue loss option and then the items that have been requested or presented within the enterprise funds. The only other thing that is not on this list currently is possibly trying to figure out where we can fit within the premium pay for some of our staff to see if we can earmark a portion of that as a potential payment, either in a one-time or a way to give a bonus potentially to some of our staff. So with that being said, I'd like to hear from the rest of the group. I know some of you have sent me some stuff, the emails, but if you want to put those ideas on the table, I'd be happy to discuss them.
Did you mention the Broad Street lift station?
I did not. So that's in the request already from the enterprise fund. I did think that they're, they're in there, so everybody knows what those requests are. The other side of that is that we are allocating $1.3 million to the smart meters that's shared across water and sewer. I didn't want to put that on this list right away without having a little bit more of a conversation about how much we wanted to put into the infrastructure side versus some of the other categories. But some of the items that I just mentioned come to just shy of $2 million. So there is still quite a bit available for allocation.
So there's a lot of numbers there.
Yes, there is.
So I, I was under the impression that this budget cycle, we were looking at the meters, palleting, Broad Street lift, the radios for the police and strategic planning and AV for the chambers. Is that correct?
Those are some of the items, yes.
So all, all good?
The discussion that I think we need to have is how much of that gets allocated to infrastructure? How much of that gets allocated to maybe some of the other categories? And how much do we put into the revenue loss side of things? So those are definitely projects that we need funding for. Jamie's here and can speak long nicely about that. But it is an open discussion between this group and our department heads about where we, where we kind of need to see that funding allocated.
Jamie, would you give us an overview of the lift station and its current condition?
On the, just so you know, the lift station, last time anything was done to it other than prevent a major and stuff like that electrical wise was 1970. I had some pictures, Chelsea had one last time we had our. If Tim can speak up a little bit for the electrical side. It still has old brake, it doesn't even have breakers, it has the old throw switches and you have to pull fuses out. You have to climb down into it. And as of right now, we are grandfathered by ocean because you're, you're entering a confined space. But, you know, some of the stuff dates back to 1934, I think it was, what we found on the blueprints. I've asked for, to seek a help to get it replaced. I've been up there numerous times and it's been turned down, but it's, it's seen its, unfortunately Josh had to pick his kid up from gymnastics, but he could say it's just a waiting time bomb that something really catastrophic happened to it.
And we're looking at a million dollar expenditure for that probably?
Yes, sir, because we need to install a new wet well and there's, there's a, the location of where it's at is very close proximity to some residents, so it's going to be a, a lot of work in a small area.
So right now, on a daily basis, you have to send somebody twice a day to do maintenance on it?
We go in there, there's a bar screen, you have to write every day, twice a day, seven days a week, 355 days a year.
Whereas if you replace it, that will no longer be required?
No, sir.
Plus it will be above ground, so we wouldn't be dealing with the confined spaces aspect. And just so that everybody is aware, Jamie and I did talk about that. We are going to make sure that two people are there each time somebody goes into that confined space.
What would happen if that would go down?
Well, we would have to get a subject company or a pumping company come in there and we would have to get it pumped and hauled to the waste we're playing. And we would have to see if we could get up with a pump company to set up bypass pumping so that we could keep operating. I know bypass pumps, you can get a silent pack they call them, but most of them have to run 24/7. So there would be a diesel motor that are running 24/7.
The other side of that, I think I omitted from the list, we did allocate the well, correct? Which, how much was that, the well drilling?
$354,000 for Branch Street well, $350,000.
I think it was a not to exceed.
Yeah, I think it's a not to exceed.
And I'm still, while you brought that up, I talked to the gentleman today and they're, they're still waiting on the screen to come in.
If I'm in the area and council, this is a.
Just name again, if you don't mind.
You're already, this is an example that we have funds to take care of something that is really, really critically needed. Why don't we do it? I mean, what, what, why? We have the money, we know it's critical, why don't we do it? What's, what's the issue that we can't do it?
Well, I don't think that any of us are saying we can't. I think the only thing we're saying is, is that we would like to have a discussion among the group about the best way to allocate 4.79 million dollars.
Well, if you've got that much money, we know we need those meters on. Yeah, yeah, we thought that, that's a necessity. This is, this is right up there, if not more important than meters. I don't understand why we could discuss something that is really, really important. If you can't understand where your department has their tongue about how serious it is and why you're here.
Thank you. So the question to the group is, outside of the items that we've discussed, I know some of you have sent me some stuff. Is there anything that you would like to put on for consideration for the allocation of the $4.7 million? Because we would like to introduce at the same time as the budget, a spending plan for that $4.79 million.
I have a question about the police radios. Maybe Chief can answer these. Is this something we definitely need or?
$13,000 we're talking about?
No, no, no.
Ninety-two, no.
Only thirteen for the police department.
It's, uh.
So only $13,000 for one portable and one mobile. So I don't know where the $92,000 number comes from.
So as I, as I mentioned, I maybe wasn't a hundred percent clear on that. Correct, so the quote was brought up to date for us as a discussion item. Fifteen radios were acquired by a southern municipality here in Worcester County to the tune of about $92,949.90. The question comes, and I believe the question is, is it necessary, right? Because that is a large chunk of money. And what we're, what we're saying is that before the town used to operate on a radio based system, where you get that value add is not on a normal basis per se. But really when things go amok and you want to have communication. Currently, we use cell phones, but during the last snowstorm, I think everybody can attest that the communication was much better. Everybody was on the same page. We were borrowing radios from Worcester County. In the event of a storm, we would probably still have to augment some of our amount with that as well. But currently, outside of the police department, we have no ability to communicate with everybody being in the loop on the same conversation. Plus, we have no ability to touch base with the police department in the event of an emergency or the fire company for that amount.
But those are isolated situations that happen randomly. We're not that often, you were able to borrow radios from Worcester County. So, I mean, I would say at this time, with all our other expenditures we need to make, that would be the least of my desires.
And I'm not even the expert, but I don't know, can I put you on the spot? Yes or no? Give me thumbs up or thumbs down. Maybe you can speak to the value add of the reason to have this versus not have this. And this is Chief RJ Road from the fire company.
So RJ Road, my full-time job, I do work for the county radio technician for the Worcester County Radio Service. The radios that the mayor's talking about are new radios. To be blunt, price of radios, we're not getting. To be blunt, price of radios are not getting any cheaper anytime soon. The radios that the town used to have, used to have public works radios throughout the town. Under previous administration, those radios were done away with, and then as recent events have unfolded, there are times that you need those radios. The county does have cash radios, but it's, it's, if you get a major storm that affects everybody in the county, they're not guaranteed. By my, I shouldn't say my recommendation, the recommendation was, and it's the same move that the town down south, in the south end of the county did, was purchase new radios for the police department. The radios that the police department currently using would roll over to become public works radios, and then everybody would be able to have communications. Police department being public safety would have the newer radios and the most reliable, and then the other radios that have been in service for a few years would roll over to be used for public works and day-to-day operations that you're talking about. The man climbing down into a confined space, he can have a radio, and the man up top is monitoring. I don't know the circumstances of that situation, but there is a specific talk group for the town to operate on a day-to-day basis that you guys don't use very often because you don't have the radios to use quite regularly.
So would that be is that if we were there with purchasing the radios for the police department chief, with making your $13,000 purchase, are there radios that you guys are going to not be using at that point, or are we just adding to what you have?
We're actually adding to what we have. The two are actually going to be the backups because we are at capacity. So we have 15 radios, 14 people, one that dispatch in case the base goes down. So that's how many radios we have. And that is the reason why we asked for $12,000 to $13,000 for those two radios, which, you know, could fit inside of the budget. On the other side, you have to ask those guys if they're going to use the radios. They actually had all the radios. Everything went inside of a box because of new technologies called a telephone. And when you take radios, RJ, in certain buildings, they won't work. Again, you don't have a signal, you have a signal. If you go in a hole, it might not work. So again, if you have the money and, you know, they're going to use it, you buy it. If they're not going to use it, you don't. Buy it.
And the other side is, is that it's a lot of money, right? And the idea that you can use a cellphone is great, right, for one-on-one communication. But when you have to share information, which we saw live in an action during the snowstorm, people were able to stay on the same page with what was going on without having to call multiple different people. So there is value add to each. I mean, obviously, the cost factor is there, but there's a reason that that bank or that channel exists for municipal operations, and then there's also a value to having that from a preparedness standpoint as well. Thank you, Logan.
Can I, Dave wants to say so.
Yep, and President David Fitzgerald.
Well, I just wondered, you know, we're trying to find one thing, so it doesn't look like we're talking against each other. RJ was speaking as his job at the county.
For sure. Yeah, we got that.
Two separate asks.
We understood that.
A comment that council member, Nerd, made, and I'll make sure I heard it correctly, they're only going to be used occasionally, maybe day-to-day, you pull your department heads. But we put a request in, in that same figure, around $88,000 to $90,000 for cardiac heart monitors that won't be used every day. We just had tonight a person at the firehouse who was, and I may say this backwards, but they were paced five times and defibrillated eight times, and they're here tonight speaking with us, a town resident that was saved by internal pacemaker and with our units being there as the backup because that defibrillator had run its course. It could not defibrillate anymore. It's programmed to do that time, it met its max. So again, the devices that go on those amelices are lifesaving and will be used to save lives every day and are in that same ballpark. So I would certainly hope the mayor and council prioritize cardiac monitor over radio, and I'm a radio guy. I used to have a guy like that. But I certainly hope you would prioritize a cardiac monitor, three of them, that would save somebody's life over a radio that's going to be used during a snowstorm, but may or may not be used by department heads. And I respect every one of those department heads. If they think that's a tool that they need every day to use their jobs, then that is fine. I respect their, as well, I hope they respect lifesaving tools that are at least two years beyond their life expectancy. We made that clear to the mayor and council that if a certain component's break, that ambulance will be out of service. We will, we will not have an ambulance that's a vast life support kit performing this procedure.
Thank you. And President Fitzgerald, just, I know I worked through that list rather quickly when I was running down, but there was a factor in here for covering some of that equipment for EMS and ASCVA, so thank you for that.
So, Chad, what's, what's it going to take to get moving on the lift station? Do we have to do an RFP item?
Yeah, you would have to do that same process. The RFP, you would have to, and unfortunately, this may even have to wait, right? So we're going to prioritize whatever we see as the act now items for the first 2.3 million, and then we're going to have to wait for the receipt of the other payment before we can maybe move forward with some of the other items.
Can we start listing the act now items?
Well, I'm sorry, hold on, I'm sorry, Councilor.
Go ahead.
Can we at least start drafting this RFP?
Yeah, there's nothing that prohibits us from doing that, but the process would be to first approve the budget with the items in it, and then you would go ahead and draft the RFP. You don't want to just draft it and then potentially not be able to act upon it because the group has not approved it.
Well, I think, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I think that the lift station is probably the top priority, one of the top priorities. We have the meters, we, you mentioned Washington Street. I guess I'm a little confused on what you're asking us to do as far as these four categories. I really think that's an administrative thing that could be done instead of us sitting up here deciding this goes into this, this goes into there. I think that, I think the important thing is that we as a group here, as like Councilor Nichols said, is what are the right nows? And let's, let's get going on those and knock them out as best we can, and as quickly as we can.
And to answer your question, I think that we're getting close to the amount that we already have as far as the amount that we can allocate right off the bat. So I have about $1 million for the smart meters. I have $110,000 for the stormwater project on Washington Street. I have $350,000 for the well and approximately $300,000 additional for the installation of the meters themselves.
So that's 1.8, because we have 1.4 left. Correct.
Broad Street lift station.
You guys have all these things detailed in the list with the costs, with some kind of costs.
That's the goal to do that. I mean, they're also in the draft copy of the budget, but the, the idea was to really hear what this group may or may not want to see as far as the prioritization, and then put that forth in the, in the actual spend out with the projects.
Well, I would agree, Broad Street, that is definitely a must.
So is it, is it your intention, Mayor, to present this next meeting allowing it to your budget?
Correct. Would be the goal to have a spending plan in place for the entire ARPA amount.
The entire or the beginnings there, though? Are we talking the entire $4 million, or we just talking what we can start on right now to get it moving?
No, because the receipt would occur within FY23, so we would want to allocate that within the budget. You're going to receive that in FY23.
No, I hear that, but I thought we still had time to do a complete allocation. Like, I didn't think it was.
I think you have until 2024, is that correct, Rondell?
He is looking over it now. Mayor, I just want, I don't want to interrupt or nothing, but I do know that, and Tim can back me up, I had a gentleman come to the paint the other day, talk about generators and electrical components, and Tim can back it up. I mean, he's said it numerous times. You know, NE even requires to put a generator in out there 56 weeks out.
Out where?
To get received.
The plant.
Uh, just, just, just to bring you up to the core.
We need that first order plant, correct.
Well, if we do Broad Street, you're talking 56 weeks just for a generator to power that lift station, and the power went out.
Got it.
A lot of actual components, I mean, I know Tim, it's three-phase, we have to upgrade it. I'm, I'm venture to say we could be looking for a year.
Yeah, as far as getting the equipment to convert it to three-phase, I mean, lead times on transformers are anywhere from 40 to 120 leaps. That's how long it can be.
I mean, I don't want to scare you, I mean, I'm just enlightened bringing you up to speed what I've been advised of, and
Too late.
I mean, to answer your question here, about $637,000.
That's what's right.
Available, rough guess, and that's taking into consideration the 1.3 for the meters, 110 for the stormwater, 350,000 for the well.
So now, the 1.3 for the meters is actually a 300,000 increase because it was only a million for the meters and 300,000 for
It should come in much less than that, yeah.
Right, but so, so you're only really around 300,000, 400,000.
What were you asking?
Because it was a million for the meters, 300,000 for Palatin, 1.3, right? Now you're saying it's 1.3 for the meters, so we still have Palatin sticking out there. So that's another 300,000.
Right, that's true.
So it's actually, we're really around 337,000.
So outside of the capital items that have been presented, the requests that we've received from the general fund, is there anything, my question, I guess, to this group, is there anything additional that you feel passionately about being funded within this 4.7 million?
I personally don't see where there's room to even think about adding anything else with this, with the amount of money that's here. And that's just, that's just me. The amount of money that's there and the need that already exists, being the general or the enterprise funds, so I mean, I don't, some of these things I think could, I hate putting things off, but some of these things I truly believe we can put off just a tiny bit longer. The radios, I mean, I, call me crazy and superstitious, but I truly feel the moment that we spend $92,000 on these radios, we're not going to snow for six years, and then we're going to be disgusted that we purchased them all. That's just me thinking here. I mean, maybe that's an old lifestyle or whatever, but I mean, I just, I just don't, that doesn't sit well with me. I think there's a better way to spend that one. Some of these other line items, some of the other ones, like for example, sorry, Mary, but your AVA system, I think we could put a pin in that one.
I'm not prepared to run a TV station today, so it's okay.
I mean, we could put a pin in that one for a little bit longer, too. You know, some of these guys that are on the list, and I appreciate that they're here, but I don't think that they are, they should be considered priority.
And that's, that's why we're having this discussion?
Well, yeah.
But that's, that's good feedback.
Can you talk about $20,000 to return to business owners?
Correct. Actually, it would be 27,000 times two, so roughly $54,000. And the way that I arrived at that is I asked Rondell how much we received in business license fees for 2021, and then we projected forward for FY22, and it came to $27,000 for FY, just shy of $27,000 for FY21, and we applied the same amount for FY22.
I think a better use of those funds could be directed at our staff.
And that's why I also put in here the, especially following our discussion this evening, providing premium pay for staff is something that we're going to look into whether or not it meets that parameter, because I think there is something within the ARPA guidelines that says that they have to be on, I think, throughout the entire pandemic. I don't know if that's 100% factual, so we'll go back to the notes and check upon the rule. But there is a workaround to that as well, which is the ability to allocate any of this money any way you would like by taking the revenue loss option at a certain value, which is why I wanted us to have this conversation, because if you work down the idea of calculating that revenue loss, you then cannot apply the straight value amount of up to $10 million for the full amount that we received. So you have the four categories as described by Rondell, or you have the ability, and the first category is the revenue loss, which allows you to be able to move that into the general fund and then allocate it as the governing body sees fit.
But there is a formula that, that has to be used.
No. So it's two pathways. You either start down the formula, and if you start down the formula, you're committed to that. You can't then say we want to adjust course, or you take the straight value approach at a certain value amount.
And I'm not interrupting, don't throw down to that, but I remember in our budget session, we also asked about the treatment plan upgrade, so this one, you all keep that in your mind.
Right, I mean, this number here is, this is for the first half.
The $2,397,136.35 is the first half, which we have in priority.
At the total.
Correct.
Just to make sure everybody's
And it's the same amount, just a penny less for the second half.
Just to interject, this, you have to have the funds obligated by December 2024 and have it expended by December 2026. I know I can help very good, but I order some generators.
Well, yeah, if we have a year lead time on generators and a year lead time on the elevator for the product in the lift station, I mean, we need to get cracking.
And I do believe we're not the only ones that are going to be faced with it. I mean, it's worldwide, I mean, Tim can back up, I mean, it's across the board. Everybody's going to be facing the time crunch on that.
So it's time to act on that, you're saying?
I'm, no, I'm not saying that.
No, I'm not telling you, you're telling us what to do, but it's part of this process to move this 56 months or whatever, three pregnancies, 126 weeks, or however many weeks you said.
That's to the point of why we want to try and get it
Right.
At least pen to paper by this budget and enough to, just so that we are meeting the deadline.
So, Mr. Ray, after this discussion, are you going to provide, or is someone going to provide us the list of high priority, approximate costs?
So we'll work internally to develop a spending plan using the feedback that we perceive for the full $4.7 million, allocating the priority items to move forward with for phase one, which we've received, and what we've identified for phase two, which is to be received, and that will be introduced with the budget.
Just to add, we've already committed to the standard, to the standard allowance method, so yeah, we would use the formula for the revenue loss.
Thank you.
So we're committed to the four categories?
We are committed to the ability to straight-line the revenue loss.
As you recall, the standard
I think the response time on that was significantly quicker, that had, a decision had to be made quickly.
I have a question again, please. Here, Regis, we are seven and five. When you all submit to the council your list, does the council vague on the priorities?
Yes, so the same way that
Does the council vage?
So the way that that works is that for the spending to occur, I introduce the budget as the mayor, I'll introduce the ARPA spending plan as the mayor, and then it does require council adoption, but that's open to amendment and then adoption or not adopting it.
All right, and so are you going to present what your council is telling you they feel is important, the lift station, the really serious cardiac thing? Is that what you're going to present so we don't have to sit and discuss it?
Well, that's, I hope we will discuss it again. It's a $4.7 million expenditure, but
Well, it doesn't, I mean, it's so easy to decide what you need to do. We know what our serious issues are. I think our business people, to get their $50 or $75 back for the business license is very nice. However, if it ends up in $54,000, certain things, the cardiac units could use that money better than our business people, and I suspect the business people would agree with me. I mean, let's be serious and think and do the right thing. We know what we need in this town. Let's do it, please. This lift station, this is serious. Listen to your people. We got your meters, we This lift station, this is serious, listen to your people, we got your meters, we know, we know we need those, Jamie's telling you he doesn't know how much it's going to cost to put them in, so he, he has money there. You're pleased with that, do it right, this thing we need with infrastructure.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda, if there's not anything else that anybody wants to add to the ARPA funding discussion?
Well, I'm just going to follow up the, on the ninth, we're going to talk about the budget you're introducing and the top allocations for ARPA.
You'll get the four point seven.
The whole kit and kaboodle.
I think we need to have that in place, maybe you all may decide to not do that, but that's up to you, but I think we need to have a plan in place and.
Can we have that ARPA information prior to the meeting so we can make a fair?
Well, so it's introduced on the ninth, so you'll actually get like a full month. So it's introduced for the meeting on the ninth and not active upon until the subsequent meeting, which would be.
I believe.
Yeah, so I think there's going to be plenty of time to develop that information.
So we, we can't have it prior to the ninth along with our packets?
You'll get it with the packets, yeah, I think, is that the question?
I'd rather have separate announcements than just the ARPA funds.
Yeah, it'll be broken out.
Not into the budget, I mean, it'll be in the budget.
It'll be broken out, so you can see this is the four point seven, but it's also going to be intertwined in the budget as well. We can even put the numbers for each expenditure associated with it.
Just want to make sure it's crystal clear, and then we can debate.
Yeah, that's the, that's the goal.
All right.
All right, so up next is agenda item number nine, which is motion twenty twenty two dash zero two, motion approval recommendation for healthcare renewal with Care First, administrative manager Kelsey Jensen's running for it.
On April eighteenth, I made a recommendation along with Zach Hall with Fun Digital to move forward with remaining with our current carrier of Care First at a three point seven one percent increase over our current rate. You guys also saw options from United Healthcare and Legit or Venacon, so tonight I'm just asking for a motion to approve moving forward with Care First so we can begin the process for open enrollment, which will take place May, I'm sorry, May seventeenth through the nineteenth, so. If there are any questions on here?
If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve those ordinance, or the recommendation.
It's a motion twenty twenty two.
Motion twenty twenty two dash zero two for healthcare.
I have a motion by Councilmember Oress, a second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect the motion twenty twenty two dash zero two approving the recommendation for the healthcare renewal with Care First, ask unanimously. Agenda item number ten is the Berlin Fire Company and Emergency Medical Services Quarterly Report, and we have President David Fitzpatrick, our chief, RJ Road here with us this evening. Thank you, Bill.
First, the President.
Yes.
David Fitzpatrick, President of the Berlin Fire Company, we'll start with the Fire Company and Chief Road to do the operational report. I'll do the area.
From January first to March thirty first, two thousand twenty two, the in-town fire rescue call responses, thirty nine calls, which made up forty five, a little over forty five percent of total calls the Fire Company responded to, it's an increase of twenty eight calls, or, or over, or out-of-town calls, excuse me, were forty seven calls, making up fifty four percent of our total call volume for that time period. Our busiest day was Monday followed by Saturdays during this timeframe, and the busiest times of the day are daytime responses of ten AM to eleven AM, and then one PM to two PM. Fourteen times, we had two or more fire rescue calls occurring at the same exact time, so more, more than one call going on at different locations. Average response time is four point zero eight minutes, you see it's a decrease in response time by point, point two minutes from the last time, and we're still well with under our six minute counting response standards. All right, so, so on the administrative side, this is a new slide, and there's actually two new slides, and one is the simultaneous call slide, our new software that's provided by the county, Ren MX, allows us to run that stat, so that, I felt that's beneficial for you all to see, indicates how busy we are, and two or more calls happen at the same time. So this is also some statistics that we can pull out now, volunteer manpower, so you can see the emergency calls just for the quarter, eleven hundred and forty, and some change volunteer hours, and then you have the non-emergency hours, that's the training, the meetings, et cetera. So you had twenty three hundred and seventy seven volunteer hours that are recorded through our computer system, that doesn't count the standby times, you ride out of fires, you see four or five cars up there in the morning, gentlemen and ladies are, are there having coffee, you know, that's what have you, and they're there to respond to an emergency immediately, so that's just the recorded time that's in this computerized system. Budget highlights, we did conclude our Friday night dinners, and we certainly thank the public for attending, sixty four hundred hours raised over the course of those six dinners, so we appreciate the public coming out to that, we'll stop for the summer because of the busy time, bless you, busy time of the volunteers and, you know, hot weather in the areas working in the city, so we'll plan on starting those again in the fall. We did receive the last quarter paid under contract, our revenue is on tax, and our expense, we're no different than you're probably hearing from your department directors or you're seeing at home with your home spending, fuel, vehicle maintenance, building repairs, all those items continue to go up, so I noticed on our bill the other day, one of our vendors, they put a five dollar delivery charge, so, you know, just increased costs that we can't control. We mentioned earlier the compensation orders, and we'll have to go back to another agenda item, you know, we put in the request, of course, our priority is the, from the fireside, would be the breathing apparatus, and then we still need to work with the town, continue to work with the town, we always talk about when we sell our budget, the operating, but we do need to keep pushing that down the road, as your, your director said, nineteen thirty, lift station, we certainly don't have nineteen thirty fire truck, but we do have fire trucks that are thirty three, twenty three, the rescue truck twenty two years old, so as we work through the operating budget, we need to continue to talk about capital at some point. I also think the trip is stopped.
Okay, and I think that's the end of that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'll be off to your other one if you guys.
Another question. If you don't mind, to the last slide.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay, we're confused.
Ignore all my files.
It should be, it should be pretty easy.
All right, go ahead.
I don't know if you need to go back. The one that identifies your busiest days.
Yep.
Can you provide whether or not that changes across each report, like if, if the days change?
Yeah, I can put it in front of.
Just because we don't really understand your perspective.
Yeah.
That's fine.
You don't need this anymore?
No.
No, you're good.
Testing your computers still this evening, so our EMS captain's working team, he wasn't thrown fifty two to operation, we're going to add one copy here, so the EMS in-town responses are two hundred and fifty two for sixty two point three percent of our calls, one fifty two out, thirty seven point six two, and then the last time he has to compare, so it is a forty six call increase from last year for that same quarter, so twelve and a half percent increase. Of those calls, a hundred and sixty six of them are in-town transports, almost sixty six percent, non-transports eighty six, so the out-of-town breaks down to eighty six, transports is sixty six. Give me just a second, we'll make the same note on this.
Thank you.
Business days Tuesday followed by Monday, so you see the fire was Monday, so was the EMS on Monday, that for this quarter was pretty busy for us, busiest times of the day for the emergency medical service, ten to eleven, followed by twelve to two. Response times, point nine four minutes, which is fifty six point four seconds, this does include some of our second run calls where our volunteers are coming, so we're actually pretty good on response time, there is an increase in simultaneous calls here, our system won't run simultaneous report, we just kind of have to look at it on the screen and know what we hear, if you guys have a scanner at home or monitor some of the posts on the website, you'll see that we have simultaneous calls also for EMS. Our times, I left this on here just to bring you up to date, or Billy would have done it, our EMS captain, we still see a little bit at times increased, all floating times at the hospital, especially when we go to solve for the title bells, code, and, of course, the numbers are going down with hospitals, they're still busy, they're still struggling with their staffing levels to get the patients off the strafing. Last year was one minute mark sixty seconds, so we did drop down a few seconds, and we certainly are meeting the sixty second requirement for a station that has on-duty personnel. The EMS revenue budget highlights, we completed our annual drive, that's the letter that goes out each November, and we get that our budget production, projection, during that time, people will also send us additional donations, so over the course from November, when that went out in this quarter, we were eighteen hundred hours higher, so all we can do is thank our public for doing that, and I left it, just the note on there, and again, I thank Councilmember Nerv for continuing to follow up the motion, so they prepare that foundation, so as a reminder, they do a broad-based solicitation in the summer, and that does affect our November, we do get, and how we know it affects, because we do get phone calls, or the Bank of Ocean City gets the direct mailers, or we will get occasional email, it's usually a phone call, saying, I've already donated, I donated this summer, and when they go back and actually look to see what they've donated, they've donated to the Paramount Foundation, a good, good group, we're not, certainly not taking away their importance in the area, and we're going to hope to work through maybe receiving some funds from them if that's possible, it takes, takes a lot of changes.
If likely, this would be the first season that that would happen, right?
I would have to defer to Councilmember Nerv, not putting him on the spot, he's, he's, he's a member that group.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is it's not something that's ever happened before.
Oh, it's happened for many years, we, we write a pretty sternly letter every year to the group.
Oh.
Yes, been happening for, for several years. Our invoicing is at a projected revenue for this quarter, and then we got the last quarter, the payment, and again, the county fund is the two additional people for this fiscal year. We talked about this before, we have our one category, which is our office pies and computers, we have to keep those tablets up and running on the ambulance, because everything now is computer-based, so we have to keep those running, so two tablet computers, keep that, fuel and vehicle maintenance, we discussed that before, and for this quarter, we're just, we're on payroll, we'll see how we call out the last quarter, just fellow shifts, people are told to be off work, people are ill, and we, we commit to at least three people there at all times in the fourth period of the day. Just our same slide about the capital fund, same as the fire, we need to, as we get through the budget, operating budget process, we need to talk about capital replacement and cardiac monitors, and try to establish an contingency fund.
While we're on the cardiac monitors, when we talked, the, the cardiac monitors had the ability to do an add-on, and we didn't know if that add-on was going to be per unit for transmission in twelve weeks.
Yeah, so it's, it was a one, that one-time cost, it was around that twenty five hundred is the one-time cost, so it's not each unit.
Okay.
So, so the numbers, the quote that we stated, and when we met at committee level, that's a, that's, that's one of the agendas.
So Dave, on the previous slide of this one, you said cardiac monitors are eighty, and then the next one, you're requesting forty?
So, so we had, we had discussed, I just left the slide in there from last time, so it wouldn't be confusing to you all, we, we did discuss, and we actually have a meeting Thursday night with the county commissioners, with Strategic Planning Group.
We go up to that.
If there was going to be, if there's going to be, when they're going to make their decision about award, if we would split the cost from eighty thousand, forty thousand from ARPA funds and forty thousand from the county, hopefully I'll have some direction, maybe, they're doing the same thing that you're doing, Mr. Mayor, Madam, Mr. Councilmembers, working through the budget process, so I, I believe we'll probably hear more about that Thursday night, if they're working to allocate their ARPA funds as part of their budget process.
So if, if, if they are, we could probably anticipate a letter from you.
We, we would, yes, we would update all of our correspondence, that ARPA fund, letter and capital fund, once we hear something. And then the additional staffing, we've already talked about that during the budget process, I just left that slide in there, and then I do owe you, I left one paper out of the other packet that you get, with two call specifics that we provide, the confidentiality, and I will get that to you, I left that paper out.
Thank you.
I'm liking what else I had.
The other item, if you give me the numbers you had requested, that I've broken out in the budget for the allocation for fire and EMS, if you send me that, I need it before, let's see. I have to have the packet together. Packet goes out on the fourth for the meeting on the ninth, so we would need that before the fourth to make sure that your expense or the grant allocations are allocated not in one lump, but as requested for EMS and the fire.
We need it by close of the, of business on Tuesday, which is the third.
And, and we, we may have to have another little committee meeting, so we discussed that, so we're all on the same page, how they're going to position the committee, between the committee members and that before, I'm just calling it committee, whatever we want to call it.
Whatever we want to call it. Another pow wow.
Dave, on your financial statements, you have, on the EMS side, you have program revenue listed, and it's up substantially than the previous year.
The program revenue, okay, so that's going to be the invoices for EMS, and that's because our call back was coming back up, what you saw tonight.
Call back.
Call back was up, and you also see the payroll that went up substantially, but yeah, payroll went up, but that's what program revenue is.
With your call volume, is it up to pre-COVID levels?
Not quite, I did take a look, it's not, not quite there yet, but where we, where we will see that is in our next quarter as summer approaches, if the tourist traffic comes back to Ocean City, our accidents, and if tourism continues within Portland, Main Street, we, we see the call back go up again, so our next quarter, and the report that we give you end of July, that also give you a good indication of the question that you asked.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You, too. And good job to the crew, David, our day, let them know, good job, and thank you for the hard work.
I'll do, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is agenda item number eleven, which is the deputy town administrators' report.
Thank you, I'll keep it fairly brief, the Parks Commission held their annual, well, it's been a few years, but it is an annual event, cleanup day, this past Saturday, we had about fifty people come out, as always, volunteers are very important, made a big difference, and I would just like to thank all those volunteers on behalf of the Parks Commission. The next event that the Parks Commission is holding is the Spring Just Walk, we do that in conjunction with the Worcester Health Department, and that will be on Saturday, day seven, in Stadium Decatur Park, and I just want to thank everybody in advance for what I know will be your company's support over the next few weeks, the mayor, council staff, and the citizens, I appreciate it already, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our deputy town administrator? All right, let's move on to department reports, and we'll start with our planning director, David McLaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, like my weekly report, I said, we issued three certificates of occupancy, we issued seven building permits, which included two residential room additions, three permits for new garages, one for a deck, one for, and one for a fence, and since I put that out, we've also completed the permit for IG Burton Chevrolet's new showroom, they have not picked up the permit yet, but it's completed, so they know it's ready, so you'll see that, that work get started shortly, very quickly. The Historic District Commission, they are going to meet next on Wednesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty two, here in this room at five thirty, and I wanted everyone to know part of that agenda will be an application for a. And I wanted everyone to know, part of that agenda will be an application for a mural dedicated to the Reverend Dr. Charles Tinley, which is to be placed on the Bruder Hill Building on Broad Street. So that's, that's been a project that the Heritage Forward, the Heritage Commission for Worcester County has been working on for some time. We've attended several meetings at the library with them, and a committee, and I believe now they have settled on the artwork for the mural. This is paid for by a grant from the Maryland Heritage Areas, and I think it'll be a wonderful addition to town. It's kind of, the location's moved around, now they've settled on one, so I'd like everybody to come out for the Historic Commission meeting if they'd like. Always welcome to open to the public, first Wednesday of every month. And last Tuesday, we had the meeting, I'm sure a lot of you are aware from the newspaper and Facebook and such, at the high school, at Decatur High, Stephen Decatur High School, talking about the Worcester County Sports Complex. And the location has been picked adjacent to Stephen Decatur High School and Stephen Decatur Middle, the large open area there, that is currently in the town, in the county, not in the town limits. But I think it's going to be, need annexation, because they'll need our water and sewer utilities. And I think, for the town, and I think I addressed that in an email to you all last week, the day after attending the meeting, we have to stick to, that water and sewer is our leverage, to make sure that we don't get all the negative impact from this project, which is a wonderful project, I don't dispute it, but none of the positive impact. I heard a lot of speakers there that night, from Ocean City and from the general area, saying that it was needed for economic development, and we need the facility in the county, and we need to be able to pay for it. Well, if it stays a county facility, there are no real estate taxes for anyone to collect. The only tax that's going to be collected is from the athletic tourism, you will, if you will, from the, the families that are going to come to town for all the soccer, lacrosse, softball, baseball, field hockey, eventually if they have an indoor arena, the winter sports, basketball, again, anything you can do indoors in the winter. And that pays for room tax. The room tax is collected by Worcester County, they keep a portion, Ocean City gets that room tax, the bulk of it. What does Berlin get?
Nothing.
We get the impact, we get the impact of Arnold's officers, with all that increased traffic on what is already a tough, tough road, it's a town road, Seahawk Road. And I can imagine, after a weekend of tournaments there, the amount of fast food bags that Jimmy and his fellows will have to pick up off Seahawk Road. Those are just two minor ones. The other one is, we've been talking about lift stations for Jamie, the 346 East Lift Station services that area. It is not a problem like Broad Street, I've talked to Jamie about this several times, but it does need upgrading. If he'd like to have different things done to it, to make sure it's there for the next thirty years, and we have ever increasing capacity out there, this would only add to it. A possibility of a two-hundred-thousand-square-foot indoor arena there, this was mentioned the other night. My, my whole emphasis in bringing this up is some for the public that weren't there, but it's also that we have to stay at the table with the county. We weren't consulted on the choice of site, but who knows, we might have agreed that that was the best choice. But nobody has even asked us, how do we go about getting the water and sewer from the town to Berlin? And we have to stick to that. So I, if I could humbly request that the council, the mayor and council, address in writing, the Worcester County Administration and the Worcester County Commissioners, to insist, like I did at the public meeting, I stood up and spoke to them and said, we need communication, information, and cooperation as you move forward, please. And I, this is the type of thing I'd like to see, that we're at the table, because all I see is negative impacts on the horizon, and someone else benefiting. I'm sorry to go on so long, thank you.
No, that's okay, because I actually was going to tie in, I'm curious, since, since that public hearing, has anyone from the county reached out for you in regards to this?
No, I reached out to them.
You reached out to them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So y'all, you are talking.
Talking, I would use loosely. We have communicated that we would like to have conversations.
Right, okay.
Dave's office has, and I have as well. I don't mind, I think Dave's actually correct, putting it in the form of a formal letter from this body, I think would go a long way.
I was actually going to mention that in my early council comments, but yes, since we're talking about it, I think that we should.
I think, I think done, done properly, you know, and as I suggested to you, there's, if there's a, you know, they claim that this is a revenue stream that will pay for itself, but there's no mention of a revenue stream coming anywhere near Berlin. So I'm, I'm not equating it to it, but like the casino revenues, there's got to be a formula for absorbing that negative impact, like they perceive casinos to be, that we got a portion of those funds. And there has to be a way of, you know, making sure that we keep the 346 East Lift Station upgraded every year, or maintained, and we have a way of making sure Arnold's got staff out there for the increased traffic flow, and inevitably, the more accidents with more cars. Also with the fire company, they're going to have increased calls, sprained ankles of people getting hurt. You think they're not going to ask for more money out of next year's budget? I, I don't. So I, I think these are the things we have to keep, keep our focus on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for our planning director? Thank you for the idea of the letter, it's a good idea. Up next is our electric utility director, Tim Warren.
Good evening, mayor and council, I have a few things to report on. Two oh five Broad Street, we installed a new underground service at that new house that was built right across from Henry's Mill Drive, the house that sits up on the hill. Stephen Decatur Park, we assisted Public Works with removing dead trees. Five forty-five Estique Road, that was multiple disconnects for customer-side upgrades. That is the townhouse development across from Bottle Branch that Willow is renovating. So we had to go in there and disconnect all the services, while they did their work, and then reconnect them. Just to let you know, most of those type of developments have the old mechanical electric meters, which slow down over time. Every opportunity that we get, things like this, we reinstalled what's called solid-state meters, which are a hundred percent accurate. And then you also hear about another location that we did that. Gold Creek, we're doing prep work there to replace the trans closure, we do about two of those a year. Two oh two William Street, we de-energized the overhead primary for tree removal. Savage Substation, did a twenty, Circuit 220 breaker maintenance, and five oh nine Bay Street Apartments, that's the old Whale Run Apartments on Estique Road, we had to shut down the entire apartment complex for the electricians to do some work on the meter basis. And while we were in there, we replaced every meter within that facility with solid-state meters. So they're all a hundred percent brand-new and a hundred percent accurate. Various locations, street light repairs, tree trimming. Starting tomorrow, we're starting meter reading, so we'll be out and about in people's yards for the next three days. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our electric utility director? All right, up next is our chief of police, Arnold Allen.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, myself and the MML Police Executive Association sponsored a conference in Ocean City, from the eighteenth to the twenty-first, we had roughly seventy-five different agencies, sixty-nine agencies, seventy-five different people attend. Big part of our conference was mental health and wellness for police officers, ethics and liability. We had legit, actually come as a part of the conference and our workman's comp provider, Chesapeake, they actually looked at ways to go ahead and mitigate, and look at workman's comp claims, we talked to Kelsey about that. And we also went over the new police reform and unfunded mandates that us as agencies and us as towns have to go ahead and work with. Overall, we had a great conference, and we'll start planning for the summer conference, doing some sessions for the mayors and the councils. So I think the board done a wonderful job this year. On Thursday, unfortunately, we're going to have to make a trip, myself and Lieutenant Fisher, part of our family, actually had death in the family. Jason Barnett, who was officer here for ten years, lost his wife, so him, his family, six children to grieve, and it was very sudden type of an event, so we're going to go to Sharon Peet, Pennsylvania, to show our support. That's my report.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief of police?
Chief, can you just, I didn't ask this beforehand, so I'm going to put you on the spot, but can you provide an update on your staffing? How, how are you doing?
Right now, out of the fourteen total full-time officers, we have four current, two positions to be filled, and two individuals are out on workman's comp right now. So the percentage is kind of high.
And we are hiring for our police communications officers as well.
That's correct.
And both of the full-time officers that we're looking to fill are, we're accepting applications for that as well.
Yes, they've been sourced.
The application actually process started, stopped today, on the twenty-fifth. We're looking to have a testing in the next ten days, and we're looking towards having someone into July One Academy. The number of applications we have, and again, the possibility, how many people are going to show up, will dictate what happens, to be honest.
Thank you, chief. Any additional questions for our chief of police?
Saw your commercial.
Thank you. About time somebody saw it.
I mean, well, I saw, I saw it at least twice, I almost called you and said, I see you, it showed up, but I saw it at least two times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, David Gaskell.
Hi, Bill.
Our senior accountant, Ron Delwise.
Weekly report for finance department, been working on fiscal year 2023 budget reports for introduction on May ninth, bond and loan balances review, water sewer rates and recommendations, stormwater rates, review and recommendations, past due accounts for collections, PCA submission and review, PSC reconciliation reports, check processing and payable register review, monthly billing, department, department meetings, schedule, projects and planning, and going paperless project for utility billing. As far as customer service and billing, termination notices mailed out on April nineteenth, disconnects will be performed on tomorrow, April twenty-sixth, and bulk pickup list compiled for Public Works, eighty-four bulk pickup locations, all items will be collected by seven thirty-eight.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? All right, up next is Water Resources Director, Jimmy Latcham.
I lost the track of time last week, so I didn't get a week for reporting, but we did replace the storm drain line on Maple Avenue before they did the paving and sidewalks on Maple, going to Willow. We assisted Public Works with bulk pickup, we've been, we had to repair a twelve-inch irrigation line out to the Sprayside A, that was completed. As in Ron Delwise said, we do also tomorrow, if people know they owe a bill, adds up nine o'clock tomorrow morning, if you're on the cutoff list, you're going to be cut off, that goes out tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and we be reading meters later in this week, and has some other stuff going on, getting called out.
Thank you. Any questions for our Water Resources Director, Jimmy Latcham? All right, up next is our Public Works Director, Jimmy Charles.
Good evening, mayor and council. Last Wednesday, on April twentieth, we had the bulk pickup, this was if your trash day was Tuesday and Wednesday, we actually made ninety-one stops. A couple of them were, people put their stuff to the curb, but weren't registered. So we actually left the paper identifying that we would pick up their stuff, left the paper the other day, need to register in the future. We had four point eight-two tons of trash, we had seven crewmen from all three departments, trash truck, backhoes, and four dump trucks. The guidelines that we have set, mayor and council set in the previous, has really helped the process go smooth, keeping it to four items, and we were able to collect them, we were done by eleven thirty. Next, this Wednesday, on April twenty-seventh, this is, it's our second trash, our second bulk pickup, this is for Thursday trash route, and I just want to remember everyone to, there's four items, please call in and register. Clothes, mattresses, all must be wrapped.
Four total items.
Four total items.
Can't say I have a mattress, and it'd be two mattresses, or six mattresses, four total items.
Yes, if you had six mattresses, we would take four.
I mean, I'm just saying, because you know how that goes in a grocery store, right? It says twenty items or less, and I'm, I'll do it too. I'll say, oh, well, I actually have juice, but it's fifteen bottles of juice, or twenty-four.
On, I'll go with the pitcher, today, we assisted Berlin Electric, we installed the two poles and a, and six running boards, frame runners for the new billboard, would still be approved, but the structure is back up and ready to go. Thank you to Berlin Electric, even though I told them that Public Works would take them. Last week, we utilized our power, our sweeper, went to the Welcome Center, and we powderwashed the front, and then that area that's painted yellow, we gave that a wash down, I think that's going to get repainted here very soon, but our sweeper has a power washing unit on it, that we can just pull up and powder wash. Where in previous, we actually had to get a hose dragged across the street, so the new power wash, the new sweeper that we purchased last year, we utilize in a lot of different ways. And we assisted with bulk peacock, Berlin, we, Public Works assisted with the cleanup day this past weekend, we were, we had six employees, all from three different departments again, we have Mall, Henry Park, all the areas, from what area we got done, grows up really well. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have one question, can we use the street sweeper to water the flowers, or is it just a water?
Yeah, I don't, I will look to see if it has a way to disperse water, not any, like as a hose.
The reason, the reason that I ask, the reason that I ask is that we got a request that now that all the flowers are there, they look pretty, but what's the plan for watering?
Well, it's been raining enough to water anything.
We do have a, well, we have a tank that we can put on the trail with a little pump that we can, so I can get up with Jimmy and we can get that established.
Okay, that would be helpful, I think. All right, any other questions for Public Works? All right, up next is the administrative manager, Kelsey Johnson.
This past week, I made several administrative access changes to various programs to allow, to remove access for Boy to snow over here, and change his accesses. So we also held three interviews for Public Works Superintendent, we had one employee, or I'm sorry, one interviewee who had an emergency come up, we did move his interview to tomorrow, so we're hopeful that after that, we can make a decision. I was working with Natalie, Mary, and Shirley to set up the new payment process for Maryland State Retirement, and while we are on that topic, I know the spending authority for our deputy town administrator is five thousand, so I do want to see if I can get approval tonight to, I make bi-weekly payments to Maryland State Retirement, they range anywhere from usually nine thousand to, if we're fully staffed, eleven thousand, so I want to see if I can have Mary make those payments during this, this time, so.
So I think the best way would be to do it as in not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
But that would require a motion and a second, and a vote by the council. So move. So a motion by council member Varell.
Second.
A second by council member Nerr, all in favor say aye, all opposed, thank you.
And then I'll carry on. We did hold our April random employee drug testing and alcohol screening. We did hold our April random employee drug testing and alcohol screening. I attended the United Way kickoff meeting at U M E S on April 21st. I will continue to remind you, open enrollment will take place on the 17th through the 19th of May and all employees are required to stop in at some point. If you're unable to, you do need to let me know so that I can arrange a separate time for us to meet. We did go ahead and schedule our annual elevator inspection for June 1st. So the elevator will not be operational that morning while they're running their tests, but I will put something out to advise people that I know we have some meetings that evening, but they said it should be no problem. And then I am working on the legit loss control survey. This survey is due annually. We have to score 90% or higher based on things we're doing as municipality in order to qualify for credits towards our liability insurance. So currently working on that. And then last thing, I can't remember if I mentioned this last meeting, but we did go ahead and schedule five sessions for someone from Warwick that's gonna come out here to the town and offer CPR, AED and first aid training. So we'll have five sessions of eight employees throughout the month of May. So they're, they're kind of sporadic. She didn't wanna, I don't blame her, she didn't wanna pile them all in one day. So, so we have scheduled those. So if anyone has any interest, you can reach out and I can see if we can squeeze one more in somewhere.
Thank you. Any questions for administrative manager, Kelsey Johnson?
So is the first identity card gonna be mandatory? Five sessions of eight, that's 40 people, right?
Yes, it's not mandatory, but we do, most of our job descriptions for the guys in the field, they do require that that be something that they be trained in. So some of those trainings have lapsed. Due to COVID, we were having difficulties getting anyone out here to perform that training. So I have reached out to Warwick and they, actually I reached out to the fire company. They said that they get their training from Warwick and Warwick has agreed to come on site, which saves us some time. She gave us a really great rate. So she'll be right out here. That'll include everyone's certification cards, so any employee that comes will receive that certification as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelsey? All right, let's see. Agenda item number 13, comments from the council, and we'll start with Councilmember Burrell.
I have two things. First, let me, let me express my total disappointment with the county. You know, you talk about the sports complex and it being in the county. Their property may be located in the county, but we all know that is the town of Berlin. I am so disappointed that, that, that a project of this nature would be planned and the town of Berlin not be informed nor consulted. Along with the letter that, that Dave has suggested be written, I would like to invite the county representatives here, here to our meeting to, to share the project and to listen to what we have to say. Personally, I think it's a real good project. And I have shared with, no, I have listened to some of you say that, that, that it is a very good project. And yes, I agree wholeheartedly. But the location may not be the best location, especially for Berlin. And I agree with what Dave had to say about the negative impact. There's gonna be, there's gonna be costs associated with, with, with operating this, this complex where it is. And that cost is gonna have to be borne by the taxpayers of the town of Berlin. And personally, I don't think that's right. So, so I am now able to talk to anyone who would like, who would like to, to, to share my opinion of this project. My second thing is really simple. When is the sidewalk on Flower Street gonna be open? Sidewalk associated with the construction of the?
I was understanding that we were possibly this week.
Yeah.
Because they called, it was Jeff.
We, we had an agreement with them that we would provide town staff as flaggers for them to do it. And they, they were trying to line it up for this week, the last I spoke to Jeff about.
I'll get in contact with someone down there and see when that project will start and get a pass on.
This is the sidewalk down in front of, I say a pass it?
Yes.
Just for clarity.
That's all I have.
Up next, Councilmember Nichols.
I'm very familiar with this.
You wanna read?
No, I'll go right now. Councilmember Burrell expressed my thoughts as far as the sports complex to a degree. I'm very disheartened as well. The commissioners stated that, you know, they had reached out to people within their, in their districts and everyone was all for this project. And I don't completely, I mean, maybe they did a, a random or maybe they did a group consensus and the group consensus was, this is great. But as far as the town of Berlin, I'm just gonna speak for Flower Street, cause that's where I live. I live on Flower Street, the municipality side of Flower Street. I'm from Burrell Town, which is the county side of Flower Street, where this thing is supposed to go. And never once were the residents of Burrell Town notified or asked what their thoughts were on this monstrosity. And that's what I'm calling it. Because that thing right there will not service those children that live on Flower Street. That thing will not service the children that live in Berlin unless you are a part of, in the league team. I say that because I have a child who was a part of the league team. I paid a lot of money for that child to play on those teams. But her younger siblings don't play on those teams. So if it came down to a time where my current teenagers went to play over there right now, according to what that thing is supposed to be, they wouldn't be able to because they aren't a part of. So my thought is, when you say it's great for the community, what community is it great for? Cause it's not great for my community. It's not great for Berlin. It sure is not great for the students at Stephen Decatur High School. Because as this community grows and we are growing leaps and bounds, that's gonna cut us off at the knees. Where's our high school gonna grow? How can it grow if this thing is right there? So, I mean, if they had come to us first, they would've heard that before tonight, but I'm gonna step off my silk box when that one comes. My other thoughts are, you know, we sit where we sit today, the elephant in the room. We are glad, we are sorry to see him gone. Mary, we're here for you, sister.
As long as you're not calling.
Yes. But I will say that former town administrator, Jeff, will be missed. His work in the town will, yeah, he will be missed. I personally will miss those 5:30 a.m. calls, hey, I got a question for you. So in the interim, Mary, I'm not gonna call you at 5:30.
Thank you.
I won't text you at 9:45 p.m., but he, yeah, he'll be missed.
Thank you. Any councilmember there?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, what Shanika said about Jeff. You know, Jeff was probably the best town administrator this town has ever seen. He was dedicated to his job beyond, beyond approach. And he was my friend and I will truly miss him. And he did a wonderful job for this town. I mean, he certainly should be congratulated and thanked profusely. Thank you, Jeff. And Mary, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Wirth?
Yeah, well, I'm just going to quickly echo the comments about the disappointment with the commissioners. I am in agreement there, but I do wanna focus on a little bit of a positive and thank Dave and the mayor and residents who spoke at that meeting. I think it was a nice, nice showing and I thank you personally, and I think we all do. And I do agree with getting the letter out as soon as we get that going and with Councilmember Burrell's suggestion of inviting county admin to, to one of our meetings. So I think that's all I have for today.
What do you think about, while we're on the topic of that, is it okay to structure it as a work session? I think that would probably be the best. It'll be a more of an informal session, but one where we can sit down together with any interested parties from the county and just have a good conversation. It would still be a public meeting, everybody can still tune in, but it would be a separate meeting just for that.
I think so. And I think they really, I don't know how much attention they truly pay to Berlin and what all goes on.
I hope that they pay a lot of attention.
Well, I mean, you know, assuming that's to all of us, right? But I'm assuming, I'm hoping that they do. But I would, I would like for them to be here to at least have a true picture of what the town of Berlin is and what we're dealing with infrastructure-wise and what the impact of that site could mean to us, even with what we're already dealing with.
So up next, agenda item number 14.
Coming. Again, reaction to your suggestion to have this, this invitation be a work session. If I had a preference, I would prefer them being just a part of the regular agenda. That would allow the public to, to participate and ask them questions.
I think that's fair. Agenda item number 14, comments from the mayor. Jack, or Councilmember Wirth, thank you for acknowledging that I did go speak down at Stephen Decatur regarding that. However, I was just the spokesperson. Really, I wanna thank all of our department heads for providing as much speculative impact about a project that we don't really know about that you possibly could. I tried to get as much of that in, in the short period of time I was given, but hopefully we can reiterate some of that in person. I do wanna say thank you to everybody that came out for Take Pride Berlin Week and the cleanup efforts throughout town. And thank my colleague, Councilmember Nichols, for joining me at the Lesma Laurie St. Shore Mayor's Association Dinner in Ocean City last week. I do have one final item and it is some good news. So every year, the fourth graders throughout the state participate in the If I Were Mayor Essay Contest. Then from there, the essays were sent to the state level where they're broken down by district. The district that we're in encompasses Somerset, Worcester, Wycomago and Dorchester. Happy to announce that Ms. Shimko from Worcester Preparatory School had three of the four district winner, or district level semifinalists, or no, three of the four semifinalists and one of the district winners for our district. So that's the, the champion for our Worcester, Somerset, Wycomago and Dorchester. That individual was from Worcester Preparatory School from Ms. Shimko's class. She will be honored at the Government House in Annapolis. So we'll brief everybody on that. And then also the local level stuff that we'll do here in the council chambers, we're working through the specifics with Ms. Shimko and the winner. So some good news. Every year we do participate in that. I go talk to the schools of Ms. Shimko and the other teachers and the school systems really due to having lifting. So congratulations to Ms. Shimko and Worcester Preparatory School and the student in law. So that concludes my comments. Up next, we have comments from the public. Anybody in attendance that wishes to come forward?
Very brief. Wearing my Atlantic Hotel hat, Laura Stern's 102 South Main. I have a letter from John Fager that's really brief. Ivy had asked in an email for all the, or phone calls actually, all the businesses to, she asked the opinion on whether we thought that the ball drop should be canceled. And John Fager felt very strongly about it. And I know it's probably not gonna be an issue, but he would like me to read his brief letter. He says, "I'm unable to attend. I appreciate you allowing my concerns to be voiced. Not long ago, Berlin was struggling as a viable small town. All of these conditions have changed and Berlin is the envy of every small town in America, as you all know. Part of that success was and is due to the atmosphere that has been created by town events. Berlin has emerged as being a fun place to visit. Please do not take this success for granted. That would be a dangerous mindset. Please do not promote ideas or talk of diminishing, canceling or eliminating any town events. These events not only bring neighbors in Berlin together to have a great time and interact with each other. The events are glowingly talked about all over the state and beyond. Social media is loaded with posts. You cannot buy this kind of advertising at any price. The merchants and businesses of Berlin need all the help they can get. God bless Berlin and all small towns in the USA." And I did have some pictures.
Yeah, they were all here and now.
It's not, it's not a big deal.
It's a network drive, so I don't know.
I have some printed. All it is, is just to remind, remind you.
Did you want to pass those, like, and those, pass number works?
It's just to remind you, because of COVID, we haven't seen it in years past, but that's what you receive was.
Large crowds.
Yeah. It's insane crowds. And it's something we all worked to, you know, to create. Thank you for listening. Do you want? No, I don't.
But just for, I'm sorry, to be correct, we weren't discussing getting rid of, were we? I thought the discussion, just for correctness, I thought the discussion was looking to see if the merchants wanted to help cover the, what, were we talking about getting rid of?
The discussion was to let the merchants take over.
Right, exactly.
Right. Well, the town wasn't gonna do it, but for someone like the Atlantic Hotel, we don't have the staff to do that. We're so busy that night. So to us, it was getting rid of. And as far, then they asked if we wanted to.
Work together with the chamber to make this happen.
Or contribute money towards it, which we, we already provide, you know, we provide the small town through it and feel that that's our contribution for the events. So that's why we didn't do monetary, but apparently now it's not gonna be canceled. A lot of it was, not canceled, but it wasn't gonna be a town event. It was gonna be put on individual, individually by each business.
It was not like, this is what we wanna pursue. The idea came up about whether or not to adjust the event. And rather than us acting on that information, we asked Ivy and Economic and Community Development to touch base with the merchants and see how everybody felt. But I'm pretty sure with the feedback that we got, not just, that's what you had, there's not gonna be an investment.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So any other comments from the public? Yes, just coming forward, name and, uh, street, name and street name.
Ron Casio, 3431 on Hill Drive. I wanna thank the mayor and the council, Dave, for your attitudes that you expressed in light regarding the total lack of anything from the county and the town of Ocean City regarding this mega complex that they expect us to host without any of our input. I think it was obvious that, that evening when our old mayor got up to speak, I know there was a three-minute limit for, for the public to speak, yet our mayor was, was cut off a three minutes, like he's, you know, like the town was just, you know, who cares? I think we need to be very careful. We've watched Ocean City over the years make that town essentially, for most people, unlivable. And we need to be very careful that they don't bring that whole thing this way to a town where people live. This is our home, it's our town. We need to be a part of any discussion. I'm amazed that we were not a part of it up until now. Still haven't been a part of anything. And we need to be very careful about what the town and the county expect to voice on our little community here. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public?
One more time, just people, one more time. Ron, that's council, yeah, I'm gonna say a word.
I say that too, Ms. Careful.
To the council, please think long and hard. You have time to add to the budget. I think five figures to correct a 10% pay raise. If, if you're home, if taxes says 350. If, if your home, if taxes says three fifty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, it would be around a ninety-dollar increase to your tax bill. I think that you need to really think long and hard about giving all of our employees at least, or, or the, the ten percent. If you have to raise taxes a penny or whatever, then so be it. So be it. They're dealing with inflation. They're dealing with I D S prices, I V prices. Some of our, our, our staff, you know, for young families with children. And I have seen people in Ascot, young families in the grocery store, you know, pick up a package of, of, of chicken and, and put it back. Uh, you know, I, we owe our employees a fair pay raise. And how long has it been since they've had one? So please, please think about it. You, you, you have time to add things to the budget. Uh, there's gonna be another meeting that, that seriously consider how lucky we are in this town. With all these folks, plus, plus, all the folks that work with them. Every single employee in this town is just first rate. They, they knew how to treat people. They did their work. They do more than, than maybe they even needs to. Please, please, just ask you that. Just think about it.
Thank you. And other comments from the public? All right. Let's see. Comments from the press? Agenda item number sixteen?
Move to it here.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Burrell, adjourned.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Nichols, our favorite.
I can't.
Councilmember Nichols.